Roberta Abdul Salam. Roberta Abdul Salam.
She was muted. They were going to mute her for a few minutes. I think she's on at some way, maybe by phone.
Okay.
Robert is here.
Oh, there she is.
Present.
Thank you. Robert Ash.
I'm here.
Jim Doris.
Present.
Rodwick Edmund.
Present.
Phil Floyd.
Uh, present.
Rodrick Fryerson.
Present.
Ryan Glover. Jerry Griffin.
Present.
Rita Hardage.
Present.
Alicia Ivy.
Present.
Russell McMurray. Alpon.
Present.
Rita Scott.
Present.
Christopher Tomlinson. Christopher Tomlinson. Thomas Worthy. Madam Chair, we have 11 board members participating.
Thank you, Marie. Um, my report for today centers around, um, we need to get the minutes approved for our November 12th work session of the Board of Directors. Do I have a motion?
The move, Jim.
Alpon, second.
Is there any discussion? If not, are there any abstentions? Are there any no votes? Okay, the minutes are approved. Uh, the only report that I have is, I'd like for you to refer to your packet, which we'll be voting on later today in the regular board meeting. The 2021 scheduled meetings are published, and from that you can see all the January meetings. Um, but they're not technically official until we vote on them. So you can refer to that if you want to put those on your calendar. Also, Jeff has a couple of meetings that he's going to be announcing, so I won't duplicate those efforts. Um, but I will say that we still have one more jurisdictional briefing, and that's with Fulton County. That'll be on Wednesday, December 16th at 10:00 a.m. That was moved from, I believe, last week. So, um, that is my report, and I will turn it over to Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Chairwoman Hardage. Um, I will, uh, just go slightly out of order because you've mentioned a couple of the meetings, um, and I will finish that off so I don't forget at the end. We do have an upcoming MARTOC committee meeting that will be done virtually. It is scheduled for Tuesday, December 15th, 2020, from, uh, 11:00 a.m. to 12:30. I don't believe we received the, uh, all the information about how to access it virtually, but that'll be forthcoming. And then, uh, finally, uh, in addition to the Fulton County meeting that you mentioned, we do have an upcoming, our monthly Rider Advisory, uh, Advisory, excuse me, Rider Advisory Council meeting will be held on Wednesday, January 6th, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., the normal hours that we have in that first Wednesday of the month. So those are our upcoming meetings, uh, that, uh, want to make the board aware of. Uh, I have two items on the agenda that I'd like to go over. The first is, um, I thought it was important, just because of the uniqueness of this year, to spend a little bit of time, um, reflecting on the year, uh, and then, uh, with a, with a very brief preview of what's ahead, uh, for us in, uh, in, in 2021. Uh, and then I will be talking a little bit about the impacts to COVID-19, but will largely gloss over that in my remarks because my remarks will be followed by Colley Greenwood, who will be presenting to you our, uh, new normal plan, a plan that I asked, uh, Colley and Melissa to, uh, to spearhead. We had a multi-discipline group of, and a multi-departmental group of, uh, MARTA employees develop a plan that is both focused on our employees and our customers and how we will, uh, begin to move into, uh, what will be our, our normal, uh, trying to get us back to where we were and, and what things will look like differently. So Colley will spend a few minutes reviewing that. Um, and I believe, uh, you were sent a, uh, a copy of the plan as well. So, um, you know, I just want to spend a few minutes, uh, reflecting, and I'm going to start out by, uh, paraphrasing a little bit. Um, you know, I think, uh, to some degree, Dickens' words of "It was the best of times, it was the worst of times" for me sums up this year so far for, for a bit. It sums it up for myself and MARTA because I believe that 2020 has been and will be remembered as a year of, of both, um, epic challenges, but also a year that MARTA has made some incredible advances. And I want to spend a few minutes reminding us of both what we have seen and achieved this year. This year seems to be floating, just suspended in time. The time has drawn out in this year like never before in my lifetime. And because of that, I think it's important to reflect and fully appreciate, um, not just the challenges, but what we, that we have faced, but what we continue, and that what we will continue to face, but also those achievements that have been, uh, done by the incredible hard work of the staff here at MARTA. So I think we should first begin and reflect on something that, that almost as I look back, feels incomprehensible to have happened less than a year ago. And that was, I think, our biggest achievement of the year. And I think it's the board's biggest achievement of the year. And that was the passage of the 15th Amendment. It was unanimously approved by our jurisdictions. A major effort by all, a major effort by our board, our jurisdictional partners, and our staff. And while the headlines focused on the extension of the sales tax to 2057, I think we all know that the real achievement in executing this 15th Amendment was resetting the relationships with our jurisdictional partners and how important that is. So how did we do this? We did it by making some real and impactful commitments to delivering improvements to our system with the existing one-cent sales tax. And I'm excited to say that even in the midst of COVID-19, we are delivering on those promises that we made to our jurisdictional partners. Throughout our service area, we have advanced these commitments. We are building bus shelters and amenities throughout our service area. We are working on and implementing a comprehensive station rehabilitation program that includes the opening of the Inman Park Pedestrian Bridge over the summer. In Atlanta, we continue to plan and design the More Marta Program in conjunction with the city. This is highlighted by the tremendous advancement and the hard work of our planning staff and our engineering staff that we have made on Summerhill BRT, which will soon to be the first BRT in metro Atlanta. In Fulton County, we continue to support the development of Fulton County's transit plan. And most recently, we kicked off the conceptual, conceptual planning of the South Fulton Parkway Transit Initiative, as well as we continue our ongoing efforts with GDOT to develop express lane bus service along Georgia 400 in conjunction with GDOT's Express Lane Project. In DeKalb County, this year, we have kicked off efforts to deliver transit centers in Stonecrest and South DeKalb. In Clayton County, we've opened the first in the region's transit center and continued to develop the long-term transit plan for the county. We've completed the planning and two, uh, of two new bus routes, ready for implementation, only delayed because of COVID-19. And while these efforts are key, we continue to make improvements throughout our systems and improve our approach as to how we make these improvements. The four priorities for the organization that I've laid out before have continued even throughout COVID-19. And I pledge to continue to focus the organization on consistently delivering excellence in customer service, delivering the capital program with speed and efficiency, strengthening the MARTA brand, and continuing to demonstrate fiscal responsibility. To that end, we've done a lot. We've established our first-ever customer experience officer, Rhonda Allen, and have a renewed relationship with our customers focused on our Rider Advisory Council. We've brought innovation, things like our MARTA Connects program, the partnership with Uber that we kicked off on Election Day. We continue to make our stations a community hub and seek these efforts to improve the areas around our stations. We've made major advancements with our TOD program to support this effort and continue to position ourselves to do so much more around our stations. One highlight worth pointing out is our commitment around affordable housing. To date, we are well underway to attracting over half a billion dollars in private investment in affordable housing projects to our region through these TOD projects that are planned, implemented, and/or currently under construction. We've implemented innovative approaches to community outreach with things like partnering with our, with the Nextdoor app, advancing station-in-the-soccer at some of our stations, revamping our public outreach efforts, just to name a few. We've implemented a centralized program management office, preparing ourselves for continued and expedient implementation of our MARTA 2040 initiatives. We gained approval from GDOT of our agency safety plan, and we continue to strengthen our relationships with our jurisdictional partners. But we've also taken head-on systemic racism through open conversations, training, and other efforts that are aimed at better understanding how our past will shape our future. So this is just a partial list of what we've done this year, even in the midst of the biggest challenge that I think we've, this agency has, has faced in some time, or maybe even ever. And these challenges will continue as we face COVID-19 into 2019. So in a moment, as I said before, you will hear from Colley Greenwood about our new, um, return to our new normal plan, um, that has been developed and implemented, and this will show how we are prepared to continue to address this challenge of COVID-19. But before we get to that, I want to spend a few moments talking about how this challenge is affecting the wider transit industry to put our efforts in context. So let's first talk about some of the trends around the, uh, transit industry. And I think the first trend that's worth talking about is ridership. We're carrying about, uh, 55% of our ridership pre-COVID. And if we look around to the 20 largest transit agencies, um, around the country, we are, um, we're being, uh, uh, at least in terms of ridership loss, the loss is, uh, is generally lower than most of the transit agencies around our country. Agencies like, um, Metro North in New York City is down, um, 80%. Chicago Transit Authority is down 72%, and these are just numbers from, uh, a week in October. Womata in Washington C is, DC is down 80%. Um, other agencies like LA, LA Metro have similar ridership decline, declines like us. Um, and so we are faring better. When we look at the financial trends, um, we are faring far better than, uh, our peer transit agencies. And just to give you a sense of what's going on around the country, I'll read, read some sort of headlines about some of the transit agencies. The New York Metropolitan Transit Agency is proposing 40% to 50% service cuts on subways, buses, commuter rail, and laying off more than 9,000 employees. The agency said that to reduce its 2020 deficit, it would need to borrow nearly $3 billion from the Federal Reserve. The Washington Metropolitan Area Transit Agency, Womata, uh, is looking to offset a nearly five, uh, 500,000, or $500 million deficit in the next fiscal year. Um, they are considering the elimination of weekend service, closing 19 stations, slashing already reduced bus service, and eliminating 2,400 jobs in addition to more than 1,000 jobs already on the chopping blocks. The San Francisco Municipal Transit Agency could lay off as many as 1,200 full-time employees next fiscal year, representing 22% of the agency's workforce. The agency is projecting a 60, $68 million deficit in the current fiscal year, which runs through, uh, June, and $168 million the following fiscal year. Uh, SEPTA in Philadelphia is projecting a shortfall of $350 million for, $350 million for their FY 2021 budget and said that without federal relief, it will have to enact extreme measures, including service cuts, layoffs, and fare increases. And finally, the Chicago Transit Agency, uh, has said that it forecasts dramatic cuts if it does not receive federal aid to close a $372 million budget gap. So as you can see, um, our peer transit agencies around this country are hurting, hurting severely. And we know that, um, congressional action is needed. Uh, there is a bipartisan, bicameral, uh, proposal of a new, uh, $908 billion COVID-19 aid package that includes $15 million, $15 billion for public transportation emergency relief. And we believe it's a starting point for negotiations, and immediate action is needed to be taken to address, um, a ravaged public transportation industry that continues to serve, um, our cities every single day. Um, I think we have to urge Congress and the current administration to provide at least $32 billion in emergency funding to ensure that public transportation, transportation agencies can survive and help our communities and nation recover from this economic fallout over the pandemic. This is the position, uh, position of APTA and one that I personally support. Um, the public transportation industry, very survivalist at stake. We urge both, uh, congressional leaders and the administration to enact COVID-19 emergency transit funding legislation before Congress adjourns this year. Um, that's a quote from, uh, APTA's, uh, position on what we need to do. So we must look forward to next year. And as, uh, and personally, as a member of the, of APTA's Legislative Steering Committee, I've worked closely with APTA, APTA leadership to develop, um, the industry's key legislative priorities for the upcoming Biden-Harris administration. And I thought it was important to share this with the board, um, so that we have a better understanding of what's going on around the country, both here in Atlanta, at our peer transit agencies, what's going on there, but also some important initiatives that we see in Washington. So APTA has come up with four key priorities. Um, the first priority is to provide $32 billion of COVID-19 emergency public transit funding to enable public transit agencies to continue to serve as a critical lifeline to essential workers and play their indispensable role in the Americas, in America's economic recovery from the pandemic. The second priority is to use the federal trans, the FTA's, the Federal Transit Administration's Emergency Relief Authority to help communities recover from the pandemic. The third is to enact a Long-Term Surface Transportation Authorization Act that addresses APTA's three top priorities. APTA is calling for a federal investment of $154 billion over six years. Um, specific, uh, critical priorities of, uh, of this needed legislation is to enact a long-term surface transportation authorization funding by a dedicated, sustainable revenue, uh, revenue process that addresses the pending shortfall in the Highway Trust Fund, including the Mass Transit Account. And as I said earlier, $145 billion over six years is what we believe, uh, the industry believes is needed for state-of-good repair, repair and to meet the growing community dan, demands for increased mobility choices. We're also calling for the re-establishment of a 40-40-20 capital investment ratio, um, for capital investment grants at, uh, 60-40, state-of-good repair at 60-40, and bus and bus facility programs at, uh, 80-20. Um, and we also want to see a, uh, creation of a new mobility innovation and technology, uh, initiative to introduce cutting-edge technologies and integrate new service delivery approaches and mobility options to the transit marketplace. We see that this is critically important for our future. And the fourth and final priority of APTA is to revise or rescind, um, some policies of the current administration that have adversely effects on public transportation. Some of these are known as the, uh, 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 they were put in place through a Dear Colleagues letter about anarchist jurisdictions that really limit some federal funds going to some of the cities around, around the country. So, um, that's, uh, an important summary of where we are in Washington. But I think in, 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 uh, closing around what's going on in Washington, it's worth pointing out that, um, while it is important that we have, um, uh, focus on the Invest Act and, and make that as the, uh, starting point for a future negotiation. The Invest Act is what the House had previously passed. It's also worth pointing out that this summer, that the federal debt limits will be reached. And, um, we need to strongly advocate that, um, that the passage of a, a sustainable and long-term, uh, program is done before the debt limits are reached because we want to make sure that, that the needs of public transportation are inside those debt limits and that we're not asking for more debt being, uh, increased as we, uh, as the federal government looms towards, uh, another, uh, need to, uh, uh, increase its, its authorization under debt limits. So finally, um, moving away from Washington, DC, I think it's worthwhile to take a very brief look and, and preview some things that we have ahead of us in 2021. Um, obviously, I'm going to continue my efforts around the priorities that I've laid out for the organization and focusing on those. Um, but we know we're going to be faced by some unique challenges over, over the next year. Um, we've talked about what's going on in, 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 in Washington, but we also recognize that where we are with many of our capital investment programs and the MARTA 2040 program, we know that we need to now begin an even more, uh, ambitious, uh, advocacy program, uh, for federal funding of our, uh, of our program and matching our local investment for transit expansion. We also know that, um, we have in front of us recovery from COVID-19 and returning, returning to a new normal that you'll hear about from, from Colley in a moment. We know that we need to continuously monitor our fiscal stability throughout this recovery. Uh, we've laid out to you in the past, and we will continue to update you periodically about our finances. Um, while we, while we do believe today that, um, we have a, a continued balanced budget through 2024, we know we're living in an uncertain time, so we can't take the eye off the ball of our finances as, uh, both in the short run and long run. Uh, we have to focus on the ongoing impacts of COVID-19 to our employees and their families and how this will, uh, how the recovery will, will impact that. We know that, uh, ridership is impacted, and, and, and we know that it's, the recovery happens, that those ridership impacts are going to change. And we also know that, that the, the country and, and our state and, and our employees face some challenges around, um, implementing of, of immunizations, uh, from COVID-19. Uh, we've, we've, uh, looked at and, uh, and talked about our state, uh, plan to implement, uh, vaccines, and our employees, transportation workers are listed as one of the priority, um, groups, uh, in Group 1B. So we know that we will be working hard, uh, over this next year, um, to, uh, to, to work to, uh, uh, provide immunizations for our employees around COVID-19. And so we know we've got a lot of, uh, challenges in, in, in addition to all the work that we need to do to continue to advance the commitments that we've made with the 15th Amendment, our ambitious plans around MARTA 2040, and, uh, the continual effort of improving our customer experience. So to close, I want to say that I'm, I'm proud of what we've done this past year. I'm incredibly excited about our future. While we have a lot of uncertainty ahead of us, I think that, um, and I truly believe that our workforce, um, the opportunities that we have in front of us to continue to shape this, uh, this, this region that we support excites me. And I'm excited to continue to work with this board. And, uh, most importantly, um, I'm confident about our future. While we have challenges ahead of us, I think we've demonstrated our ability to address those, uh, challenges um, straight on, uh, throughout this year. And I'm certain that we can continue to do that, uh, in the future. So finally, I just want to share that I'm incredibly thankful for this opportunity, thankful, thankful for the opportunity to, uh, to continue to lead MARTA and to continue to, uh, to work with a, uh, a great staff and an incredible Board of Directors who, uh, who give me, um, a lot of great advice and, and leadership, uh, in, uh, in what I'm doing for this organization. So with that, um, I will close my remarks. I'm not sure if anyone has any questions for me about, about any of those. It was, it was quite lengthy, but, uh, I thought it was important to share, um, what we've done, remind ourselves of, uh, of some great accomplishments that we've made. I think that it's so easy to, uh, forget about the great things that we've done in the midst of the, the, uh, chaos and the, uh, the, the struggles that we have caused, uh, caused by COVID-19. So. Any questions?
Anybody have a question for Jeff?
Madam Chair, I have, I have a comment. This is Rod Fryerson.
Okay, Mr. Fryerson.
Um, my thoughts are, I'd say thank you for putting in perspective, uh, MARTA's operations in relative to all the other transit systems across this country and how they're struggling even greater than we are. And I think that has, uh, a great, great deal to say about how previous board members and previous leadership with MARTA has set things in place so that we can be prepared for these types of downturns. I think sometimes the, uh, we can forget our history and, and don't realize that when we had previous recessions, things were done to prepare so that when these things came about, we wouldn't be so extremely impacted. And so I want to say thank you for putting what we're, where we're right now in contents of all other transit systems that we're facing. Uh, once again, I, uh, I do understand the challenges that we are faced with today and into tomorrow. But these things, we will weather together. And so I just wanted to share that with you. And once again, you know, I'm always appreciative of your leadership and your, um, insight to transit for us and for myself. And, uh, once again, uh, we may not know what the future holds, but we know who holds the future. That's my feeling on it, and I look forward to a brighter day. So, so I want to say, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Alicia Ivy. I'd just like to, thank you. I'd just like to say first and foremost, thank you to the ladies and gentlemen and leadership at MARTA because you all have been very much steadfast in making sure that each and every day everyone is safe, healthy, and we continue to serve the traveling public. And so with that, I want to say thank you to you, Jeff. Thank you to the executive team. Thank you to the Board of Directors because this is an uncertain time. But we know that in tough times, we know that we must rise to the occasion, and we know we find out what we're really made of in tough times. So thank you very much.
And, uh, and, and thank you. We had a, you and I had a real good personal conversation the other night and, uh, and, and, uh, you know, I really appreciate all that you've done for the agency and me personal. So, so thank you so much.
Anyone else? Mr. Parker? I think it's Mr. Greenwood next, right?
Yep, it is. Uh, so I will turn it over to Colley. He has a, a presentation that, that, uh, he's going to share with you. And, uh, there it is. So I will go back on mute. So thank you. So thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Hardage, Board Members. Mr. Parker, uh, I believe we last broached this subject with you at the board meeting in July, so I'm here today to provide a, a brief update. Uh, next slide, please. I will, uh, I will acknowledge, you know, the, the current COVID-19 landscape, um, that we continue to operate in and, and I'll demonstrate our focus in progressing customer service and the MARTA brand as promised, uh, and bringing our customers and employees with us. We'll also share some relevant stats updating you on the body of work that the task force has been working on, um, and then outlining the next steps and shift in our task force focus. Next slide, please. On the, uh, on the COVID front, things have not yet improved overall. We've got, uh, growing number of cases in, uh, in the state. MARTA's got two hundred ninety-eight cases of our own, uh, mounting deaths in the state, and MARTA also suffered a death you will recall. Bus ridership, uh, oscillating, oscillating between fifty-five and fifty-nine percent decrease in ridership and, and rail similarly with sixty-seven decrease in rail ridership. These are, uh, year-over-year numbers. And you can see on the right, the, uh, the seven-day rolling average is, uh, up a twelve percent higher than we have seen in the past. So, um, these are the, these are the conditions that, uh, MARTA continues to work in, and you'll see a picture on the upper right-hand corner of a, uh, research and analysis representative out there, uh, you know, in the cold night bundled up doing the job of monitoring and counting our, our mask adherence because that is one of the key things that we're looking at in terms of driving decisions about what happens next. Um, but, you know, on that front, y- you can clearly see that, um, that mask adherence is an example of some of the many positive outcomes that the body of work produced by the task, uh, force members has, has brought about. Um, next slide, please. Though we were initially forming to tackle internal issues, uh, facing the displaced employees at MARTA, uh, with so much happening inside and outside of our organization, our GM directed the task force to, you know, to widen our scope and, and address customer-facing initiatives as well. Given that we were basing our decisions on the same set of dilemma and data, it all just made good sense. Of course, the, the sudden and ongoing nature of this challenge meant that we would organize our actions as well. So we, we went with a kind of a now near distant approach to how we were going to organize our, our, so crisis response was, you know, we're in it, what are we going to do immediately? Things have to get done. Stabilization was more a nod to, now we've had some time to, to write our resources and figure out if we've gone too far in any direction and, and start to make sure that things are sustainable. And then the readiness and resilience piece is a nod to making sure that we're in a position, um, that's more competitive or more, more successful should a similar outbreak like this, uh, like this occur. Next slide, please. So I'm going to, um, I'm going to take a, a second to kind of scroll through, uh, the document. Um, everyone's been given a copy of it, um, but I, I just wanted to give some notable mention to a, a couple of, a couple of, uh, talking points. So the document itself summarizes sixty-five things that we've done or that we are doing, and it provides a troll really of talking points for employees, uh, some of whom are working from home and may have been feeling isolated from the efforts or the information. Um, and this report also allows and actually invites everyone to open relevant discussions with their supervisors and with their coworkers. So I wanted to share mention of page two, which answers, you know, one of the pressing questions, um, on our employees' minds was just, you know, when will employees return to work on site? So page two takes the time to detail to those folks that are interested, um, you know, that there are four conditions that basically have to be met. So we go into it and we talk about the governor rescinding, um, emergency orders for the state and the mayor approving entry of the city of Atlanta into phase four or five of the city's reopening plan. Then we talk about critical improvements that we're making here at MARTA such as, um, um, uh, the, the Clean Start Program, which is a, a series of cleaning and disinfection, um, tasks that we're working on, and as well as the, um, the HVAC modifications that we're doing. Uh, when we get to page three of the report, um, you'll find that it, it provides employees with a, a collection of references and resources, right? Uh, the COVID hotline, the, um, employee assistance program, uh, payroll issues, weekly updates, even a link to the CDC. By the time we get to page seven, we've summarized the twenty-eight early actions involved in our, in our initial crisis, uh, in our initial crisis response. So that would be on page seven of the report. From there, we go to page nine of the report and we start talking about stabilization efforts. Uh, you know, where we're fine-tuning the early actions, we're balancing the resources and emphasizing, uh, MARTA's commitment to the American Public Transit Association's National Transit Recovery Signatory Pledge. And this is a pledge that really talks about what the ninety transit properties that have signed the pledge have committed to doing in, in regards to, um, to COVID-19. And it also sets out, uh, reference to the public responsibility in this effort. From there, the report, um, goes to page eleven and, and we get into details of the essential service plan for, for buses, uh, along with the methodology for service restoration in, in the Essential Services Plus Plan. Uh, then we'll, the report by page sixteen explains the levels of train service, um, that we'll be providing based on ridership and the reopening of station washrooms. These are just examples of some of the, the efforts that have been gone, that have gone into collecting the, the information. Um, on page eighteen, um, we detail employee-focused strategies to inform, protect, and support our most valued resource. Uh, on page twenty-four, we talk about readiness and resilience initiatives that position MARTA, you know, more successfully, as I said earlier, in the event of a future similar outbreak. And on page thirty-one, we have what we call the stoplight indicator, which is essentially, it's a, it's a four-page visual status of key elements that, um, that we're tracking for a successful new normal. Uh, by the time we get to page ninety-nine, that's the end of the report, and, and that's complete with relevant policies, procedures, and memos. So the situation remains fluid, but we timed distribution of this information to employees so that they can inform themselves of everything that we're doing and have done in anticipation of their full return to the workplace. It also serves to help our employees feel empowered, uh, to speak with authority to their friends, to family, and to customers about the safety measures in place for them at work and for customers on the system. The task force felt that we would have missed a valuable opportunity if we didn't supply our staff, our, our ambassadors, if you will, with that kind of pertinent information. So if we can go back to the slide six of the presentation, um, I'll, I'll just say that all of that work continues. Next slide, please. Yeah, all of that work continues, and the return to new normal task force has pivoted again, committing to review of all assurances and assumptions that we made inside of this report. Um, we're ably led in this effort by our own internal audit group to ensure that we're ensuring, that we're ensuring that we continue to do everything that we said that we would do. So, you know, we did, we put our arms around what needed to be done inside and outside the organization. We tabled these sixty-five initiatives and started tracking and monitoring and making sure that these things were being done. Um, now we're going back to make sure that, um, that we're doing what we said. We use regular task force meetings and, and weekly, uh, EMT COVID phone call follow-ups to monitor, uh, the key indicators. Uh, we look for trends, uh, and opportunities to essentially double down on the measures that are known to be effective, but often hard to sustain because, you know, it's human nature and COVID fatigue sets in, so we have to actually make sure we're doubling back to, um, to do just that. Um, for example, next week, uh, we're going to reconvene a supervisory, operation supervisory town hall for personnel so that we can reemphasize for them the importance of the basics, the hand hygiene, mask adherence, social distancing, PPE, uh, communication for themselves and their subordinates and, and even for people in their personal lives as we manage through the holiday season. As for continuous improvement, this week we complete the bipolar ionization project, all that work in MARTA's employee, um, facility spaces, uh, except for Abendale and Laredo, which will be done in Q1 after the HVAC upgrades. And that's all referenced in the report, but what's not referenced in the report, and it's something that we've done since, is that we're now targeting similar technology, uh, bipolar ionization on our buses and L-bands and trains. So we're with a view to, um, launching something in Q1 to accompany the antimicrobial filters already installed, uh, on the vehicles. So that's just an example of the what's next posture that we continue to take, uh, bringing new ideas to the table, um, for consideration and implementation. Next slide, please. And with that, Chair Hardage, I return the matter to you for information.
Do we have any questions from Mr. Greenwood? Mr. Parker, do you have anything to add?
No, uh, n- nothing substantial. I do, I just, just want to pass on, uh, ju- just a nugget of, uh, of information that I just received right prior to the meeting. You know, one of the things that, that's enumerated in, uh, in, in the report is, um, you know, putting, putting masks in stations and on buses, and, and we've been, uh, you know, really successful w- with that. Um, it was something that, that, that we, uh, you know, laid out to do and, uh, seemed like it was a Herculean task ahead of us. But I just heard a report from, uh, from Rhonda this morning distributed, MARTA has distributed a million masks to date since we began distributing those, either handing them out at stations. Every station now has a dispenser, every bus now has a dispenser, we've got it on our mobility van. So, uh, you know, it's exciting to see that a, uh, it's not just the, the words in this report, it's the actions of our employees that are, that are really meaningful, and, and I think the mass distribution is a good example of those actions to make this, uh, both our agency safer and, and our, uh, community safer as well. So with that, I conclude my report, so thank you.
Uh, I do have one question for someone. On the report, it said that there were two hundred and ninety-eight, um, COVID cases at MARTA. Are those all employees?
Yes.
Yeah, tho- those are MARTA employees, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
And, you know, we do, we, we continue to, uh, to, to, you know, we, going back to, you know, probably April, we made this decision around transparency. We continue to track and, and post those, all of those cases on our website so you can actually go in and, you know, obviously, we're, we're, we're respecting people's privacy, but we thought it was important that we're sharing with our employees and customers, um, you know, the extent of the illness in our, in our agency.
And I, I would add that two hundred and forty-three of those employees are back to work, uh, fifty-one of them recovering at home and, uh, and two remain under medical care.
Thank you. I appreciate that update. I need a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of litigation.
I'll make that motion.
Who's that?
Seconded.
Roberta.
Oh, Jim Duratt, and who's seconded?
Ivy.
Roberta.
Roberta's seconded. All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Oh, is it, was that a, an opposition or, okay?
No, no. I forgot, we didn't have to do the "aye."
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, so we will, um, sign out on this and go into the other executive session webex, and I'll see everybody over there. Thank you.
Latanya.
Um, Frida?
Now, this is Roberta. Hello?
Um, hello?
Yeah, this is Roberta.
Um, do you need to be called for executive session?
Yes, ma'am. That's what I was just going to let you know. Uh-huh.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Hey, Latanya.
Yes, Mr. Griffin?
This is Mr. Glover. Can you send me the link for the executive session? This is the only link I received.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.[1459.82]
That's what I was just gonna let you know. Uh-huh.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Hey, Latanya.
Yes, Mr. Griffin?
This is Mr. Glover. Can you send me the link for the executive session? This is the only link I received.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All the board members, this is Marie. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, Marie.
Yes, indeed.
Thank you. Madam Chair, the time is now 1:30. Should I go ahead and call the roll?
Yes, Marie, please call the roll.
Actually, I'm sorry. We need to... Actually, I'm sorry. We need to end the executive session first.
We do that before we call the roll. All right. We need to have a motion to move out of executive session.
Worthy moves.
Mr. Griffin, second. Okay. Are there any that abstain? Are there any no votes? Okay, we have, we move out of executive session. Now, Ms. Peters, you can call the roll.
Okay, thank you. Roberta Abdul Salam. Roberta Abdul Salam. Robert Ash.
Present.
Jim Doris.
Present.
Rodrick Edmund.
Present.
Bill Floyd.
Present.
Rodrick Fryerson. Rodrick Fryerson. Ryan Glover.
Present.
Jerry Griffin.
Present.
Frida Hardage.
Present.
Alicia Ivy.
Present.
Russell McMurray.
Present.
Al Pond.
Present.
Rita Scott.
Present.
Christopher Tomlinson. Thomas Worthy.
Present.
Madam Chair, we have thirteen board members present.
Rodrick Fryerson is present.
We now have fourteen board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. The first item on our agenda is public comments submitted. Ms. O'Neal.
Thank you, Chair Hardage. We only have one public comment at this time. It's from Ed Williams, and you all should have received that comment via an email, and it will also be attached to the minutes of this meeting. That's all.
Thank you. I now need approval of the minutes of the November 12, 2020, meeting of the Marda Board of Directors.
No move. This is Robbie F.
Second, Ivy.
Is there any discussion? Do we have any abstentions? Are there any no votes? Okay, the minutes are approved. Our first committee report is the External Relations Committee with Mr. Ash.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The External Relations Committee met on November 19, 2020, and received the following briefings: A, a briefing on the 2021 legislative agenda; B, a briefing for public engagement update; C, a briefing on the media impressions update. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Ash. Our next committee report is Operations and Safety with Mr. Griffin.
Madam Chair, the Operations and Safety Committee met on November 19, 2020, and approved the following resolutions: A, resolution authorizing the procurement of traction motor optical encoders IFBB 46549; and B, resolution authorizing solicitation of threat and vulnerability assessment and training program RFP P47755. I request approval of these resolutions.
Worthy seconds.
Do we have a motion?
The motion came from the...
Oh, I'm sorry, from Mr. Griffin. I'm sorry. Worthy, second. Is there any discussion? Any abstentions? Any no votes? And it's approved, Mr. Griffin.
Madam Chair, this is Marie.
Yes.
The Planning and Capital Programs Committee report.
Frida, you went out of order.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll go back, Dr. Edmund. My mistake. I went out of order. I apologize. Okay, but can we finish what we're doing with Mr. Griffin?
I think we finished. That concludes my report.
Do you have to read the briefings or no?
That was it.
Is that done? All right. Then we'll back up, and my apologies. Dr. Edmund, can we do the Planning and Capital Programs?
We sure can. This committee met on November 19, 2020, and approved the following resolutions: A, resolution authorizing conversion of a fee simple disposal to a long-term ground lease to support affordable housing within the Avondale Station TOD. There was also a resolution authorizing the award of a single-source contract to Motorola Radio Systems. And lastly, there was a resolution authorizing the award of indefinite quantity construction contract. I respectfully request approval of these resolutions and move for their approval. Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, I have a question. I saw a note from Marda about pulling the ground lease off of the agenda. Did I misinterpret that?
Madam Chair, this is Liz, if I may. I think Mr. Floyd is correct. The staff is requesting that Resolution A be removed in that the developer has agreed to the initial terms of the already-approved development that you as the board approved, and so staff is requesting that Resolution A be withdrawn.
Okay. There's a lot of background noise, but, okay, so Resolution A is being requested to be withdrawn from this?
This is Dr. Edmund. I would like to, my motion has been moved and seconded at this stage. I would like to request a friendly amendment to my motion to be, first, strike that. I want for my initial motion to be withdrawn and to respectfully request a friendly amended motion. In order to do that, the person who seconded it has got to agree to it, whoever that was. So moved. Okay.
That was Mr. Pond, okay.
With that, I withdraw my initial motion, and I moved the amended motion is that the resolution authorizing the award of a single-source contract for the Motorola Radio System, and also the resolution authorizing the award of indefinite quantity construction contracts be approved. That's my motion now. Is there a second to that?
Al Pond, second.
Okay.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Do we have any abstentions? Do we have any no votes? So your resolution is approved. Your resolutions are approved, Dr. Edmund.
And in the committee meeting, we also got briefings on the 2020 surfs adjustments, as well as a quarterly briefing dealing with progressing the plan. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Edmund. Mr. Fryerson, the Business Management Committee report.
Madam Chair, the Business Management Committee appointed and approved the following resolutions: A, a resolution authorizing award of contract for the procurement of Cisco Collaborations Flex Plan IFBB 469339; Resolution B, a resolution authorizing the renewal of Marda's excess operating property and liability insurance programs for 2021; and C, a resolution also authorizing the award of a contract for the procurement of drug and alcohol software RFP P43284. I request approval of these resolutions.
Do we have a second?
Worthy seconds.
Worthy seconds? Is there any discussion? Do we have any abstentions? Do we have any no votes? The resolutions are approved.
The committee received the following briefings: Briefing on the FYI 2021 First Quarterly Financial Highlights and the Financial Key Performance Indicators. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Fryerson. Our next committee report is the Audit Committee with Mr. Pond. Mr. Pond, you're on mute.
Yikes.
Okay, there we go.
Excuse me, sorry. Madam Chair, the Audit Committee met on November 20, 2020, and received the following briefings: A, a briefing for the Marda Annual External Financial Audit for 2020; B, briefing for the Marda Act Management Audit 2020; C, briefing for the internal audit activities; and D, briefing for cybersecurity updates. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Pond. Item number seven on the agenda is a resolution authorizing the procurement of body-worn cameras for the Marda Police Department. This went before Ops and Safety, I believe, two months ago, and then was added back. It was removed at last month's meeting and added back, and I believe the issues have been resolved. Mr. Griffin or anyone else, are there any comments about this resolution before we vote?
It was approved by the committee before, and it was withdrawn for further discussions about the vendor, but I think it's ready to move forward.
Okay.
Madam Chair, this is a question. Who is the vendor winning this procurement?
It's in the resolution.
I don't have the resolution in front of me.
Madam Chair, this, Bill Floyd, I think it's a TASER accident, but I don't, I've not seen this. I'm sorry.
Axum Enterprise Incorporated.
It's still involved. I have not seen this at all, and maybe it's in an email that I missed or something, but...
It was in the agenda package.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. I missed it there. I would like to postpone this vote for another month to give me a chance to look at that. I apologize. If you don't want to do that, I certainly understand. But I was not comfortable with the way this was presented before, and I have not had a chance to see anything any different. I did talk to the chief about it, and he said he was going to address those issues, so I suggest he probably has. I just haven't had a chance to look at it. So I'm gonna, I will abstain from the vote, and let you all go ahead if you want to. That's entirely up to you.
What are the board's wishes with this? I can move either way with this. What does everybody want to do?
Madam Chair, if we move forward, we held it for a month.
Okay.
And the department is anxious to have this equipment.
Okay. So do we have a, we have a motion to resolution?
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Seconded by Rod Edmund.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Edmund. Now, do we have any further discussion? Do we have any abstentions?
Abstain, Madam Chair.
Mr. Floyd abstains. Are there any no votes? Okay, the resolution is approved. The next resolution before us is a resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the procurement of our general counsel and other legal services, RFP P46721. I'd like to give you just a quick update and certainly open it up for questions. Your executive board acted as the interviewing committee for the general counsel reviews. Firms replied to the RFP. Five firms were interviewed, and today we're bringing before you the executive board recommendation, which is to accept Justice Leah Ward Sears of Gambrell and Russell as the legal counsel, general counsel for the board for Marda. I'll open it up to any questions. Do we have any?
Should that be put on the table as a motion seconded?
Yes, we have to have a motion, and then a second. I just thought I would ask if there are questions, if anything else.
Right, Edmund moves.
Thomas Worthy, seconds.
Are there any further questions or discussions? Do we have any abstentions from this vote?
Madam Chair, this is Liz. I just also wanted to point out that in addition to the general counsel, the other legal services outside counsel are being carried through this resolution, and there are a number of other firms that are listed in the resolution you have in your package that we'll see.
Thank you, Liz. Yeah, they're all listed in the resolution, so if you want to see any additional information, it's all in the resolution that's in your packet. Thank you. Okay, do we have any additional discussion?
I've got some discussion. If you could, just clarify what that means functionally, all right? I mean, my understanding is we're voting on Justice Sears to be the counsel representing the Board of Directors, and then you're telling us that there's other information in the resolution about other firms that are going to get business for Marda. If you could just articulate that, and I apologize because I didn't read the resolution.
The resolution lists all of the firms that replied to the RFP.
Oh, okay, okay, no problem, no problem. I'm aware of that.
That's what, and I didn't name all of those firms, but I wanted you to know it was available if you wanted to see it.
Okay, thank you. That clarified it.
And Liz, can you just confirm that this is the process that we've used in the past where it was the general counsel and other legal services that were procuring through this procurement? This is consistent with previous actions?
Yes, that's correct. This is, you know, essentially how we retain all of our outside counsel services.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Dr. Edmund, were you, were you done?
Yes.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Mr. Ash, yes.
And maybe provide some context to this discussion for some of my colleagues, some of our colleagues who haven't spent quite as long on the board as some of the rest of us. Back when, in 2010, when I joined the board, we, Marda had had a general counsel, and he had been there for a couple decades, quite frankly, and most of the legal work, or much of the legal work that was awarded by the authority, went through that outside general counsel, who is one of the two people that the Board of Directors actually hires, the other being obviously the CEO. When Mr. Persley retired, we restructured the alignment of responsibilities such that Liz O'Neal are what in normal corporate America would be thought of as Marda's general counsel, because she is the chief legal officer of the authority, but not the board. We restructured how we were going to award legal services to make clear that that was going to be a decision she made, because it was her budget that was being spent, and it was work being done on behalf of the authority, such that the general counsel's position to clarify was simply and to represent the board itself, which is what the Marda Act provides for and what has been done for the past five years. So, you know, we award these things together, but in a sense, for the last five years, they have been pretty separate, and in a way that I think, you know, as we discussed at the time, realigned the responsibility and the authority into the same set of hands, i.e. Liz's. I hope that is helpful to people.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is Rod Fryerson. For the sake of us who are not legal scholars, like my board members, Leah Sears is an attorney, but we address her as Justice Sears. Is that correct? Is that how we will be going forward when we speak of her?
That is my understanding, so, yes.
I certainly will.
Okay. Okay, just want to make sure. So I don't call her, Mrs., call her Justice Sears. Is that correct? That's appropriate.
This is Rod Edmund. The protocol is to reflexively refer to a person who has been on the Supreme Court of a court as justice until they ask you not to, all right? And that's pretty much, it's almost reflexive every time it's justice, just like with Andrew Young, his highest position, you know, in public service was ambassador. Everybody refers to him as ambassador, but when you get with Andy Young, sometimes they'll say, "Don't refer to me as ambassador. Just call me Andy." And so until Justice Sears says otherwise, it's justice. That's the protocol.
And I will let her know that she's muted, so whatever she's trying to say to us is not being heard.
Thank you. Thanks for that port of clarity.
I would just note for anyone, and I frankly will be a little surprised if people at the call aren't familiar with her, but she has an incredible record of accomplishment and achievement in the legal profession, both in the state of Georgia and elsewhere, and we called her justice because she was the chief justice of the Georgia Supreme Court and made history when she did so. Court and made history when she did so. And my wife used to work for her, but that's a separate issue.
Wonderful, thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to, I'd like to express my appreciation to Robert Heisman for his service for the good number of years and going back as our general counsel. Robert, you've done a sterling job, and I really appreciate you.
Well, and it was after the vote, I did have a note that I wanted to read about that, but I think we should take a vote at this point, if everyone's okay with that. And so do we have any abstentions? Do we have any no votes? Then I would like to welcome Justice Leah Ward Sears as our new general counsel for, beginning in the year 2021. But I do want to take a moment and personally thank Robert for all the work that he has done as the general counsel for MARTA from 2016 to 2020. Your performance has been stellar. We appreciate the great work you've done by yourself and your firm. And while we've decided to award the general counsel RFP to another firm, I want to make it clear that we've been very happy with your representation and the work that you've done for our board and for the agency. And we look forward to continuing to work with you and your firm on other projects as they arise when Halloween night and you are selected to do other work for MARTA in the future. Thank you, Robert. We really appreciate your work.
You're here. Thank you.
Robert, did you have anything you wanted to say? At one point, we had talked about that, and I apologize, I don't want to put you on the spot. I don't want to overlook you.
Shattering the way, to, without having unmuted my computer, you'd think I'd have figured that out by now. Thank you, Madam Chair, for those very, very kind words, and Mr. Durick, you as well. It's been a deep honor to have served as only the third general counsel of the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority, but it is at least as great an honor, quite frankly, to be succeeded by a titan of Georgia's legal community in Justice Sears. Justice Sears was writing opinions in years ago that, that in some cases were unpopular, but that have since been embraced almost unanimously by other courts around the country, including the United States Supreme Court. She is a pioneer without peer, and to be succeeded by her in this role is the, is a deep, deep honor, and I appreciate the opportunity both to serve and to be able to, to express that to Justice Sears, Madam Chair, and to you and the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. We greatly appreciate it. And Justice Sears, we'd like to welcome you. Welcome to the MARTA Board.
Thank you so much, and thank you so much, Mr. Heisman, for those wonderful words. I appreciate you, and I've always appreciated you. You're a fine lawyer and a good friend, and I look forward to continuing that, so, but thank you. And thankfully, I want to thank the board for this opportunity. I, I look forward to serving. This is going to be challenging times in the next years or so, as this is now a challenging time, but I'm excited to be, to have the opportunity to tackle all of this with you. So thank you so much for the chance to do this with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Justice Sears. We appreciate it. The next item on the agenda, item number nine, is you have listed the 2021 Board and Standing Committees' meetings for the year. We need to approve these meeting, this meeting calendar. Do I have a motion to approve it?
Ash, so moved.
Seconded.
So Ash moved, Pan seconded. Is there any discussion regarding the meetings? If not, do we have any abstentions? Do we have any no votes? So the calendar for 2021 is approved, and I would tell you that you can look at that for your January meetings. Those are now official.
Okay.
Our next item, item number 10, is we need a report from the nomination committee. Mr. Griffin chaired that committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The nominating committee met on December the 7th and 9th and considered the nominations for officers. We were not able to reach a consensus on the chair for the coming year. Dr. Edmund nominated Ms. Scott, and Ms. Scott seconded the nomination, and Mr. Pan nominated Mr. Floyd, and I seconded that motion. But that was a two to two vote, so there was no decision made on that office. On vice chair, we recommend Ms. Roberta Abdul Salam from Clayton County to serve as vice chair, and Mr. Robbie Ash is nominated as secretary for the coming year, and we did not nominate the treasurer and anticipate until after, and would recommend filling that seat after the chairmanship is filled, because that should be, if we keep the chair rotation in order, that should be a DeKalb County representative. So Madam Chair, that concludes my report, or our report.
Okay, since we have two nominations for chairs, in order to follow Robert's rules of orders, all you attorneys help me with this, but my understanding is we would get the nominations that we have in front of us, which is Mrs. Scott and Mr. Floyd, and allow the board to vote on these by voting for one or the other. Does that sound like the fair way to do this? I want to make sure everybody's okay with this.
It does.
Madam Chair, may I be recognized for the purposes of offering a substitute motion?
Mr. Ash, I guess so. We'll, we're all open to hear, so let's go.
I occasionally pretend to be a parliamentarian, but I'm not one, so someone stop me if this is procedurally incorrect, but let me take a step back. I mentioned back in 2010, I was appointed to the MARTA Board, and I think I now have the second longest tenure on this board, only to Mr. Durick, which is a testament to stubborn, I suppose, on both of our parts. When I was appointed to the board, I was warned that prior boards, it was in the wake of the reconstitution of the board by the Georgia General Assembly. And I had been warned, quite honestly, that prior boards had seen some pretty nasty divisions, some pretty ugly fights, that jurisdictions occasionally were pitted against each other, that board members squared off in ways that reflected some of our historic challenges as a city and as a state. And I got to tell you, I am incredibly proud and appreciative of the fact over the last decade, we really haven't seen that. We have worked hard over those years to figure out ways to discuss, to argue. Lord knows, we certainly haven't always agreed on everything, but to not fall apart along lines that other boards did, to be better than that. It has taken much discussion periodically. It has taken much work. It has taken compromise. And so I've been spending the past couple days praying over the situation we now find ourselves in, where we have two very fine people, people I both consider friends, and both of whom I have tremendous professional respect for, who both want to be chair and who have, you know, ardent supporters on both sides of those things. And I also remember that the last time it was DeKalb County's turn, the way we handled this was that Mr. Durick was chairman for a year, and that then Fred Daniels was chairman for a year, and that that was how DeKalb's two-year rotation was handled. And so in that sense, I will propose a substitute motion that is my attempt to find a compromise, to find something that isn't going to be everything that everyone wants, but hopefully isn't anything that no one would accept, or that we couldn't all say grace over. In the nature of compromise, that's where I am, where my head and my heart are. And so the substitute motion I will propose is that the board confirm Rita Scott to serve as our chairman for the 2021 year, with the express understanding and expectation that we will then confirm Bill Floyd as our chair for the 2022 year. I've probably said more than I needed to say at this point. I hope that this is something that we can all get together behind, and that we can move forward in 2021 together. I appreciate everyone's patience with me and listening to me drone on at this point, but I, again, I feel strongly about this, and I hope that it is acceptable to you, my colleagues. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would like to have the floor, please.
Yes, Ms. Ivey.
I want to say that I wholeheartedly agree with Robbie's opinion. I do believe that that is a wonderful way to look at this particular situation. Both Ms. Scott and Mayor Floyd are two very upstanding, progressive leaders that I've had the pleasure to work with alongside. And I believe that what Robbie has presented simply embodies the way we do things, not only at the MARTA Board, but officially what we call Atlanta Way. And so I would like to leave that with my board colleagues, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I commend Mr. Ash for his comments, and I don't disagree. However, I would point out that next year's election of officers will be done by an entirely different board, and several of us that are rotating off the board and will not be there next year, and I don't know that it's possible for this year's board to bind next year's board and, and decisions on officers. I just raised that question. I'm not...
Madam Chair, this is Bill Floyd. I'm not comfortable with this either. I, I think if Ms. Scott's going to be elected to this board, that she should be elected to the chair, and I'm, I'm not comfortable, I'm not comfortable being elected to serve a year from now, because I don't know what my life's going to be like a year from now, and, and I'm not willing to do that, nor am I willing to put her in a position of only working a year. So if that's the board's desire to do this, then I'm fine with just withdrawing from the competition.
Madam Chair, this is Rod Fryerson. My thoughts are is that, you know, the position is a two-year term, and, and I appreciate the compromise that we're trying to achieve, but I, I would think that whoever serves in that role will probably need those two years and really to be, to be effective in the second year, as they begin to learn how to direct this board at that level. I, I will hope that, you know, that we could, we could keep it as a two-year term, because I just think that I want somebody whoever serves, one of my colleagues, that they have the opportunity to do well in a two-year cycle. That's my thoughts.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Dr. Edmund.
Yeah, and I just want to put it on the record, I mean, first of all, none of us on this board created this situation. I mean, it was created just by being born in America. But here we are, and we are charged with running a transit system, sometimes the 10th or 11th, but usually the ninth largest transit system in America, and it serves 85% of the passengers that ride are brown or black. And we have a white CEO who's doing a fantastic job. The majority of the C-suite is white. The majority of the board, we can count, is white, and the seat, the chairman of the board for the last seven years consecutively has been white. And I agree with Mr. Ash in that, you know, both Mayor Floyd and Ms. Scott are eminently qualified to do the job. In my opinion, I've been on this board probably a month or two less than Robbie, so I think I came on two months after Robbie came on. But what I've seen is that the requirements, the requisite for being a good chairman, one, you have to be capable, which I know that both of these people are, but more importantly, you have to have the commitment and the time, and I know that both of them have that. I would say this, that the optics of basically having a chairperson at this time who does not reflect the ridership would be a horrible mistake on our part. And we have a chance to basically step in front of this, and, and again, MARTA is not going to sacrifice in any capacity, because again, I do know that Ms. Scott is eminently qualified to do it, so is Mr. Floyd. We're not going to lose anything. It's almost like, you know, having, having 200, 300 hitters at a baseball game. They both can put the ball in play. With that being said, the optics, especially at this time, and I'm not going to get into a political diatribe, is most important, and I feel very strongly about Ms. Scott being the chairperson, and in honesty, I feel very strongly about the compromise that Robbie basically introduced. Again, I wasn't just blowing smoke. I mean, I do believe that, you know, both, both people will do a fantastic job, and there's not going to be any, anything lost with MARTA's vision by two board members that represent the same jurisdiction splitting a two-year term. So those are my thoughts, and, and again, I'm prepared to vote.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Hi, this is Rita Scott. May I speak, please?
Yes, Ms. Scott.
I would like to say that I would serve the MARTA Board in whichever capacity and however the board votes, and whether or not they vote to split the term or the two terms, that I consider myself blessed to be able to serve, so just want to say, a decision from my colleagues.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Let me help coordinate this, because I want to make sure I'm correct, because I heard Mr. Floyd say that he didn't want to split the term, he wasn't comfortable with that concept. So am I to assume that's not on the table at this point?
Yes, this is Bill Floyd.
Madam Chair?
From my perspective, I'm not interested in being elected to the job at starts a year from now, and, and I'm also not comfortable involved in a racial decision, so. So anyway, I would suggest we just vote on the chair and then move forward. And I'm, quite honestly, my inclination right now is to withdraw, because I don't want to, I certainly don't want to, I can't, wait, I certainly don't want to put this board in any kind of a position that might, I don't think it's fair to the MARTA staff or the MARTA employees to put this board in any kind of a position that's where the, where choices are based on race. I would hope we're past that, and I, I think I could provide something good for the next few years for the MARTA Board, but I'm also not interested in putting anybody in a position. I think if, if this election is made based on race, then it puts either me or Ms. Scott in that position. So I'm quite comfortable with withdrawing from this race and letting her have the job, and I suggest that we just draw my name.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Roberta.
Yes, yes, Ms. Scott.
I just want to say something in earlier discussions about our elections and our process. I know we're not going to resolve it all today, but I think it's very important for us to codify the rules, the process, the procedures for us doing this going forward. Is it indeed rotation in terms of, of time, or is it in terms of rotation of seniority? We need to codify it so that we don't go through situations where there's uncertainty into whether we're doing it the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure what that means. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I think we're doing it the right way, and I think we know the, the sequence of, you know, which county gets it next, or which jurisdiction gets it next. I think that's been kind of laid out, so...
I understand that, but it's not codified anyplace. There is no record of it anyplace. That's all I mean. There needs to be a record of, that's how it's done.
Well, I think that's a good job for whoever the new board chair is, so there you go. So let's try to have a nomination here. Ms., I'm not, I want to make sure I'm doing this as fairly and correctly as I can under these circumstances.
I think Robbie got a second.
I didn't, I don't believe I got a second.
No, I don't think, but, but you don't...
So, you know, while I still feel that, to Mr. Griffin's point, I agree, actually, that we cannot, because we vote annually, and I know as a, as a fellow local government scholar... that we cannot, because we vote annually, and I know as a fellow local government scholar, I expected this objection from him. But I wanted to be clear and transparent about what I was doing because we can have a general person's agreement that that's what we're going to do. And I'm going to put myself on the record as that is my intention. That said, if Mayor Floyd is not comfortable being put in that position, I'm certainly not going to do that to him, you know, like, like General Eisenhower. You don't want the nomination. We can't give it to you. Can't make you take it. But I, so I will withdraw my motion and offer instead the simple election of Rita Scott as our 2021 chairman and of Bill Floyd, if he's willing to do it, as our 2021 treasurer.
Second.
Who is the second?
That was Ivy.
Oh, Ms. Ivy. Okay, thank you. Is there any more discussion?
There is discussion because the nomination committee came out with, I believe it was Ms. Abdul Salam was the vice president. Mr. Ash was the treasurer and then the secretary. Let me finish my comments if I could. All right. Tell me if I'm wrong. My understanding was that we were voting on the entire nominating committee recommendations. Are we just focused right now on the chairmanship?
Yes, the way Mr. Griffin placed it because we didn't have a concise one person. We were going to vote on the chair and then go back and based on how we found from the chair, we would vote on the treasurer. But that, now Mr. Ash has suggested that since we have a chair, he put the other person in treasurer's position and that's how we are.
And that was a point of confusion because Mr. Ash's nomination or recommendation dealt with two spots, not just the chairmanship.
Yeah, he's off the, yeah, that's off the table now. So let's go back and have a nomination for our chair. Let's do it one at a time so we don't confuse anything. Who do we have a nomination for the chair for next year?
If I need to withdraw my combination motion, I think I need the permission of the person who seconded it. I believe that's Ms. Ivy.
That is correct. I will withdraw that for the record.
All right. I nominate, I will offer the nomination of Rita Scott for chair for 2021.
Ivy will second that nomination.
All right. Is there any further discussion on the chair? Do we have any abstentions? Do we have any no votes? Okay, so Mrs. Scott will be the chair in 2021. And next, we go back and we have nominations that are for the, let me look at these because I want to make sure I tell you correctly. We have the.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, do you have them, Mr. Griffin, in front of you?
Yes, the other nominations are Ms. Abdul Salam for vice chair and Mr. Ash for secretary. And I would move, I would suggest that Mr. Fryerson, in order to get back in the chairs right, the other, the Kappa County representative, be elected treasurer.
Let me, let me just point of order. Mr. Griffin, if you could, look back to your notes because my recollection of what we recommended, Ms. Abdul Salam was vice chair, Mr. Ash would be treasurer, and that the secretary slot would be open. I think we had discussions about Mr. Ash's experience with numbers and the like. If you could, I think you just may have misread it.
Well, then treasurer come, which they come up with there, which will be Atlanta's turn again. So treasurer will be fine. Then I'll nominate Mr. Ash, Mr. Fryerson for secretary and Mr. Ash.
Let me be clear here. Mr. Pryon, I mean, maybe I, maybe I didn't hear it right. Mr. Pryon, you were in the meeting. Ms. Scott, you were in the meeting. What was it, what was it that our recommendation was? I just, you know, I was trying to affront your authority, Mr. Griffin. I just, I just want to get it right. All right.
I think there were some notes from what I recall. We went back and forth on that issue and then, and then I think you made a nomination for Mr. Ash's secretary, I recall.
I don't recall that. I don't. I recall us having a discussion the way we left it. I'm sitting here looking at my notes and that we said that we were going to suggest that Mr. Ash be treasurer and keep the secretary spot open. Again, what I also remember is that all of us agreed that there really was no functional difference in terms of the prowess thereof of the position. So I'm wed in stone about who does what. I'm just trying to get it right about what it is that we left with. And again, I'm looking at my notes. And so if we want to change it, that's okay. If we want to change it, that's okay.
I would suggest we go forward with Mr. Ash as treasurer. And we have Roberta's vice chair.
And then what, and then who is the nomination for secretary?
Fryerson.
Fryerson, okay. So the rest of the nominations before you are Roberta Abdul Salam for vice chair. Have Mr. Fryerson as the secretary and Mr. Ash as the treasurer. Do we have any additional comments where that is concerned? Do we have any abstentions? Do we have any no votes? All right, we now have an executive committee for next year. Thank you to the nominating committee and Mr. Griffin for heading that up.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Let me make a very, very brief statement. And again, you know, body on this board, we bring our individual experiences and histories to the board and we give it all to the board for the betterment of the board. And with all due respect, I heard Mayor Floyd say that, you know, it was kind of a shame that things reduced to race. This isn't simply reduced to race. To act like race is not a factor, what goes on with MARTA is a bit fantastic. Yeah, yeah. But anyway, to act like race is not a factor, what goes on with MARTA, just like race is a factor in what goes on with the world, that's the way that it is. We didn't create this situation, but it is what it is. I want y'all to reflect that on a number of issues that come before the board, I don't think it's by accident that on a few of these issues that the board is split, quite frankly, based on racial lines. And so to act like race is a non-factor is, is a bit fantastic. And I think we as a board, you all as a board, because I'm rolling off, would do better if we embraced this reality instead of running away from it and acting like it doesn't exist. It does exist. And I think that MARTA will be better as an institution with people riding MARTA when they see some leadership, the chairmanship that reflects who they are also. So anyway, I just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you, Dr. Edman. We have one other item that comes before us today, Ms. O'Neil, for a litigation matter.
Thank you, Chair Hardage. I would request authorization for the settlement of the claim of the estate of Ellen Freely against MARTA in the amount of $2.4 million.
This is worthy. I move that we accept that recommendation.
Edman second.
Any discussion? Do we have any abstentions? Are there any no votes? Your item is approved, Mrs. O'Neil.
Thank you.
I know that this is the part where we have comments, but as we wrap up our meeting calendar for 2020, I just want to take a moment to reflect on the amazing work that things happened under unusual circumstances this year, as you heard from Jeff. You know, we're so fortunate to have a board who cares about this agency, plans for the future, and has made some pretty tough decisions this year over the last nine months with regards to the safety of our riders, the safety of our employees, and trying to keep all those buses and trains running. We continue to meet remotely. We've done our best to address as many issues as were put before us. I think a special commendation needs to be made to every employee at MARTA and to Mr. Parker and all of his C-Team staff for the outstanding work they've done and are continuing to do during this pandemic. 2021 is around the corner. It's going to offer its own challenges. But I'm confident that we will continue to adjust as needed and move forward, putting the riders and the employees at the forefront of all of our decisions. But I want to take this time to recognize three board members who are rolling off of the board this year. We've been so fortunate to have each one of them to offer their time and their talents to help make the MARTA Board one that we are all very proud of. Dr. Rod Edman, you've been with us 10 years. You joined the board in 2011, representing the city of Atlanta. And you've served this board and chaired many of our committees over your terms. Most recently, you've been our chair of the Planning and Capital Programs Committee. And Dr. Edman, we appreciate your service and please know you'll be missed. And we have Jerry Griffin, who's been with us for six years, was appointed by Clayton County in 2015 as one of the original board members from Clayton County. And Jerry's taken his role very seriously and probably has one of the best attendance ratings of any board member. He's always been at almost every event we have. He too has chaired in many capacities, with most recently being the chair of our Operations and Safety Committee. And Mr. Griffin, we wish you well and can't wait to see where you plan to travel once those restrictions are lifted. And our third board member is Alicia Ivy. And Ms. Ivy represents Fulton County and specifically the South Fulton region, was appointed in 2017. She served the past four years in many of our roles in our board. She currently co-chairs the Operations and Safety and is the treasurer of our executive committee. And like Dr. Edman and Mr. Griffin, Ms. Ivy has worked tirelessly on many projects and causes for MARTA. And we appreciate all your efforts as well, Ms. Ivy. So we promise to have reception to honor all of you once we can safely do it and see you in person, and we look forward to that. And as my final act as the board chair, I want to wish everyone a wonderful holiday season, a very happy new year. And I look forward to turning the gavel over to Ms. Scott. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Before we end the meeting, may I speak, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, as you all may be able to see, I had emergency grandma duty at 2:00 PM. And so I was trying my best to not say anything until this young lady went to sleep. But that did not work. So I would like to say first of all, thank you to the MARTA Board, those that will be leaving and those that are here for voting me in as your newly elected chairperson. I consider it as an honor and I'm deeply moved. I want to say thank you and my intention is to serve you well. In regards to the three members that are leaving, I feel as if though we have, we are family. Dr. Edmonds, I affectionately call you on the side, Dr. Lawyer. I hope that does not offend you. I consider it as a honor. When sometimes I'm pretty bad with names and when I want to refer to you, I say, Dr. Lawyer. Mr. Griffin, I refer to you as the gentleman from Clayton County. So I want to say it's been an absolute pleasure, the year and a half that I've been there working with you. And last but not least, Ms. Ivy, I want to say you are a great representative for Fulton County. I want to say thank you since I met you. You have shown that you care about MARTA, you care about the community, you care about people in general. And I just want to say it's been a pleasure serving with you and to each and every one that supported me in your vote. And I want to say this absolutely has nothing to do with race. When I was approached about the chairperson nomination, I did my due diligence and I spoke to community leaders and I asked them for their opinions and I asked them what their thought. I called Mr. Floyd to tell him I would support him no matter what. So I want to say to the leadership of MARTA, to the employees of MARTA and to my fellow board members, I'm excited to serve you in 2021. Please know that I understand what it means to serve and I call it an opportunity and a blessing to be able to serve you. I look forward to what we're going to do in 2021. Thank you.
Madam.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Pryon.
Madam ex-chair, madam current chair, past chair. I just wanted to point out to the board that I think your two years as chair of this board has been just outstanding. You had to deal with a whole number of issues and you provided great leadership. You were very active in all the jurisdictions. I know that you attended all the jurisdictional meetings and went out of your way to to develop that relationship and were a large part of getting the 15th Amendment approved. So you really put your fingerprints on the organization. And working with Jeff, it's a much better organization today than it was two years ago. And I know on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you and I'm sure they feel the same way.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Let me, let me say thank you for the opportunity to serve with each of you. I take great pride in what has been accomplished in the last six years since Clayton County joined. While all of us wish that projects could move forward quicker, we understand how it goes. I do commend the staff. I think we have in place now the mechanisms to to get projects moving and to get dirt turned as we try to meet the transit needs of this community. It's been my great honor to serve with each of you. And Madam Chair, I commend you on the great job you've done and, and, and working with Jeff and the staff to get through this year. It's been a phenomenal, something to watch. So again, I'll leave you with excitement for what's been accomplished. And I look forward to you meeting the judge that's replacing me that will be coming in, Judge Katie Powers, she is currently on the Superior Court of Fulton County. And she'll be joining the board next month. So the best of luck going forward and you keep the progress going to move the citizens of this, this area. Thanks.
Madam Chair, this is Alicia Ivy.
Yes, Ms. Ivey.
On the floor.
Yes.
I would like to thank all of my board colleagues. It's been the greatest pleasure to have served with all of you. But most importantly, I would like to thank all of the ladies and gentlemen that served with honor at MARTA. I would like to all thank the people who we serve because that's most important. But most importantly, I just want to say sounding congratulations to Chairwoman Rita Scott and congratulations to Justice Leah Ward Sears. And I wish all of you a wonderful, best, positive and productive 2021. And thank you for the privilege of your time.
Do we have any more comments?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Rod Fryerson, go ahead, Mr. Floyd.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Floyd.
Okay, I, first of all, I'm, I want to congratulate Rita Scott on getting elected board chair. And I don't want anybody to leave this meeting thinking I'm upset or disheartened by this. I mean, I was looking forward to the possibility of serving, but that's not in the cake, so I'm fine with that. And to Dr. Edmonds, I would say that I don't think anybody can serve on this board without understanding that race is a part of every decision we have to make. And so I think his implication that I might be somehow ignoring that by wanting to serve is wrong. And so I'm a little bit bothered by that comment. But I wish Ms. Scott the best. I promised her my support. I wish you the best. I think that MARTA has a great staff and they are doing a great job. And the next two years are going to be very trying years. And I think it's going to take everybody working together to get us to the point where we're, we're back functioning and providing a service to those who need it the most. But I don't want anybody to leave here today thinking I'm upset or mad about not being elected. But honestly, the job's not that good a damn job. I'm okay with not having it. So I wish Rita the best and I'll give her all my.
I'm okay with not having it. So, uh, I wish Rita the best and I'll give her all my support. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Rod Fryerson.
Yes, Mr. Fryerson.
Yes, I wanna say that, you know, when I came on this board, I had a chance to meet, uh, the outgoing members and, and spend some time talking with them. And one of the things that I've learned is that you get to know a person's character and their heart and their passion. And so it's always been very genuine, the way that they have always tried to go about what they've done to make Marta a better board and make Marta a better transit system. And so I wanna say thank you to that, to those, to those outgoing members. I'm gonna miss talking with you. I'm sitting next to you and having your counsel about things that y'all have learned this, this season that y'all been here. I mean, we got, uh, we got almost 20 years that we're gonna leave worth of board members who have knowledge and have a, a, experience Marta in, in the past. And so, but, uh, as we look to the future, I, I think it's still a great possibility for us as a transit system. I look forward to, uh, just adding value where I can, where I can serve, whether it's on the executive board or, or the committee. I wanna say thank you, Mrs. Hardidge, for your kind of counsel to me when I came on. Uh, it was very, very appreciated. Thank you. And, uh, to my colleague Rita Scott, I look forward to us, uh, raising the bar here at, at Marta and delivering those projects that are very important to our community and to our county. So, uh, thank you very much and I'm glad to be a part of this.
Ma- Madam Chair?
Yes, Dr. Edmund.
Very, very briefly. Yeah, I, I just wanna be very direct. Uh, Ma- Mayor Floyd, believe me, I have no way made a personal attack against your integrity or pug your integrity in any capacity. What is clear to me, and this doesn't have to just do with you, but what I've seen in my life experiences is that whenever people who are subjected to issues of race bring it up, people who are not subjected to it act like it's a curse word. Oh, you know, how are you gonna bring race into this? For, for somebody to say that to me at age 59, it insults my intelligence. So I do take that personally, gentlemen. When come, people come to me and, and, and make it seem like I've got a problem because I see the obvious, which is that race plays a factor in, in decisions that are made. So notice, this has nothing to do with you or me. It is a generality. Race is an issue that we will have to deal with long after we're both gone. And so I just wanna put that on the record also. I, I've had a great time being on this board. Um, I think I've made a difference in some capacity. Uh, I, I've, I've suffered more losses than wins, but that's the whole beauty of being part of a board. We bring each and every one of our own collective independent experiences to the board and then we, we shake something out and that's what we do as a board. And I'm proud of what it is that we've done over the years. And I, and I know that, that Marta's in good hands. And I hope that everybody on this board, uh, going forward, that they don't run away from race, that we embrace that issue and we make sure that it is a factor as we make decisions that affect, uh, Metro Atlanta. So again, thank you. I've had a wonderful time and I, I respect and love all of you, including you, Mayor Floyd. You're a wonderful person. You and I have always got along well, okay? Alright, God bless you all.
Any other comments? Well, I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday season.
I wanna say, this is Rita Scott. I wanna say I did not say, I did not acknowledge you because I expect you to be there with the leadership and guidance and all of the information that I know I will need. I expect to rely on you, your leadership, your experience, and I look forward to you serving on the executive board to make sure you support me. Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Scott, I'm, I'm there for you in any capacity you want. I, I look forward to working with you. That's with a smile on my face because you're the chair. So is there any other comments or anything that we can do today? Well, if not, I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday season and we'll reach back out and see everybody in 2021. Take care.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members.